Now, open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
Our first of two presentations tonight is a special recognition for two of our amazing parents from the Bilingual Parent Advisory Council. We have Ms. Sammy Calderon, who will introduce, do the introductions, and we also have a special guest from the community, Mr. Luis Fuentes, who is going to recognize Aracely Mendoza and Maria Aracely Jaime for the special contributions and leaderships they've made throughout Lake County and also through District 76. So Ms. Calderon and Mr. Fuentes.
Good evening, everyone. We would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and express our gratitude to Aracely Mendoza and Maria Aracely Jaime for all their assistance in our community, as well as in our school. Whether it's assisting one of our drives, volunteering at school functions, or bringing meals to a member of our community, they always lend a genuine smile and a kind heart. Thank you for all your dedication and devotion.
Good evening, Dr. Sharma. Luis, thank you very much for having me, principals, board members, and staff. My name is Luis Fuentes. I'm a Mandalay resident, and I'm currently the vice chair for the Board on University Center and the president of the Latino Coalition. Couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to celebrate those two individuals in our coalition because of their, you know, tireless work and their effort and their commitment to the community and, of course, to the Diamond Lake School. I had the opportunity to know them for over 10, 12 years, and they're always been amazing. There's no words to express what they do for their Latino community and for everybody, not just the Latino community, without even seeing what they're doing or how, or they're asked questions. But I don't know what to call it, Aracely, because the two of them are Aracelys, so it's... But we call it Chellis because of their... What they're creating for their Latino community and for everybody else is a great impact in the community of the work that they do, the volunteering at any level. I've been in Mandalay for over 30 years, and I had never met anybody like them. They're such a wonderful person. But of course, they cannot do this without their husbands. Their husbands are here as well. And a lot of times, it's the other way around when they say that we cannot do this without their help. But I know the family as well, and they're setting an example, not just for their kids, for everybody else in the community. And I'm so proud of them, of what they're doing. There's thousands of examples that we can put out together. We had the opportunity during the pandemic to be here at one of their gyms to assemble masks and some cleaning supplies for the community, and they were here. They were here helping. And anything that we do, they're also... They're part of the Latino Police Academy. I know that they help at the Mandalay High School. So they're everywhere, what their name is called. They're there without asking, you know, what am I gonna do? So they just go there, they help out, and it's... And I'm so... You guys should be very happy that they're here at this school. So thank you very much for what you do, and thank you to the family, and I see their kids are also here. So thank you for the opportunity.
There is not much more I can say to top that, but you captured it all very well on behalf of the district, the district leadership team, the Board of Education, and all of the thousands of Diamond Lake families that you've helped and supported and loved for the past nine years that I've worked with you. You are an amazing team. You're selfless. You look for no recognition, but we wanted to take this opportunity to give you the highest award that we could from our district, which is Two Big Diamonds for these amazing diamonds, the Chelli, the Chelli Sisters. I love it. So thank you so much. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Our second presentation tonight is the Canine for Cares led by Dr. Berger and her team that are here today. So I'm gonna hand the floor over to Dr. Berger, who has a presentation and some guests that she will introduce.
Good evening, District 76 Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us tonight. So to give a little bit of background of how the whole concept of having a potential therapy dog at our school came from conversations that we were having about what can we do to help and support kids even more than we already do, thinking about all of the different resources that we use in our building that help our children with both mental health and social emotional learning. We had done some research. I had talked to several different districts who said, yes, we have a therapy dog. You are never gonna believe what this will do for your building. So I reached out to the lovely Lisa, who is here with us tonight, who is from Canines for Comfort. I told her our story here about District 76 and how we do anything and everything we can to help our children and families sparkle, and she said, I think I have a match for you. It happened a lot faster than I thought it potentially could. Our beautiful potential match is also here with us tonight. So you will get a chance to meet Polly, as well as see how this beautiful dog also interacts with children. But before we start, Lisa's gonna come on up and give some information about the organization and how things work and develop. And then Jenny Landite, our speech path, and Eris Johnson, our social worker, are also here to give some information regarding their departments.
Thank you. So as Erica said, my name is Lisa Wernley. I'm one of the founders, actually, of Canines for Comfort. We originally started six years ago and maybe a week. And we started off training what we call psychiatric service animals, and our primary audience was veterans and children. We know the difference that these dogs can make in a person's life and their daily life. And when we were approached by a school during COVID, or actually pre-COVID, they wanted us to bring our dogs in for therapy visits. We did, and they started to collect data, and the response was just overwhelming, the need for these dogs in the schools. We also now train for law enforcement groups as well. So we refer to them as facility dogs because they're therapy dogs that are dedicated to one facility, and the caveat is they need to go home with a handler every night. So I think we've identified a potential for Polly. But anyways, a little bit about our organization. We now have six board members. It started out with four of us. We've expanded. We've grown. At the end of this calendar year, we will have placed 32 dogs. So it's pretty remarkable if you think about it. We work through, we call them host families or puppy raiser families. The dogs are never kennelled. They're created in a home, but they all live in someone's home during their training period. First of all.
I got it. Sorry.
Clicker, 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 clicker. All right, so the way we work, we will identify dogs in the process. We work with a few rescue resources. So a lot of our dogs are getting a second career. Some dogs come from breeders. Polly and her two sons were actually rescued from a puppy mill. We brought them in, and we will work with those dogs. We will evaluate them first. Not every dog can be a therapy dog. Not every dog can be a service animal. So we evaluate the dogs. We also will identify prospective clients or recipients, as we refer to them. And we evaluate them too, because not every person is going to be a good candidate for a dog. We do have pretty strict, stringent requirements. We require all of our recipients to come to a training session weekly with their dogs. The dogs are initially trained by their host family, and then when we identify what direction we think that dog is gonna go in, it'll make a great service dog, or it's super friendly, calm, would be great in a school environment or with a police department. We look at who is on our list, who that dog would best serve. We invite them to training and assess whether or not that's a good match. If it sticks, then the dog goes through training again. The dog knows it. It's really the handler that's going through the training at that point, because we wanna make sure our dogs that are gonna have our stamp of approval are going to be reputable for us. We don't have dogs that are gonna be misbehaved, no nipping, no... I mean, these dogs are... I don't wanna say saints, but they're amazing dogs. But we monitor that. So in addition to going through training and then graduating, those dogs will eventually have to come back to training. So we require at least once a quarter, what we have found out, at least with our law enforcement groups, they've created a great bond, and we have a cohort for our facility group. They come to training every week, just because it's a good time, and the dogs get so excited to see each other. So it's a wonderful thing. And then, you know, it just kinda continues on. So... So with the host family, I talked a little bit about the kind of training. So majority of the dogs, much to my husband's dismay, I started our house. We teach them their name. We do all the housebreaking. We let them chew the Christmas ornaments. We have them, you know, break things in the house or whatever. No, seriously. But we do the potty training. We do the crate training. We do their basic, you know, if it's a puppy, the basic, basic training. If a dog that comes in through rescue, we actually quarantine those dogs for 10 days. We need to make sure, because we have several dogs in our house as well. We need to make sure those dogs don't have any diseases, that they're going to infect any of our dogs at home or at training. We have them assessed by a veterinarian. So all of that stuff happens at our house, and then they learn some basic commands. Sometimes they stay with us, depending on what's going on and how many dogs we have coming in. We may shift them to an alternate host family. That'll start with their basic obedience training, and that's when they're learning how to heel, how to sit, how to down, come, stand, stay, all those wonderful things. Polly, I would say, is right between that beginner and intermediate. She knows all of her commands quite well. Might just need a little refresher. She went to training tonight and did excellent. Did her come, did her sit, did her down. But she was just, she's just a happy dog, very happy to see people. She lives in a home with a teacher and her husband and two children, so she's around kids all the time. As soon as a couple of the kids walked into the school, she immediately started to gravitate towards them. So she'll be great for this job. And then we move to the handler with a little bit of guidance. So that host family, as well as the trainers, we kinda shift from a training role to a coaching role. And we'll walk alongside with that new handler to make sure that they understand how the dog is trained, what the commands are, how to make corrections if they're just, you know, a little bit off. So that's kinda how we work. We'll never do anything wrong. No, she'll never do anything wrong. And I think that's it for my part. I will just, you know, for the record, the first school that we placed a dog with, the comments that they have come back to us now, three years later, it's amazing to see the dogs help the students potentially de-escalate from a situation or just earn different rewards throughout their day. Kids will sign up to walk the dog at recess, and, you know, there's just a lot of different ways you can spin this, not only to help someone who might be in crisis, but to also create a reward program for those that are doing a good job. So thank you.
So for those of us who don't pet dogs, it might be a small minority, to know that actually there is a chemical reaction. So research has shown that when you are petting an animal, that you have lower cortisol levels. So that's a fight-flight-or-freeze. Those chemicals reduce, blood pressure decreases. We also found that there's oxytocin hormones. So that's the hormone when mothers are nursing their babies, both of them experience. So humans have that experience as well when they pet dogs. So in addition to the health benefits, we also wanna talk about the next part, the heart. So with Johns Hopkins Hospital, they did a research on patients with post-traumatic stress disorder. They were given dogs, and 84% of those patients were able to see a decrease in symptoms. And the symptoms are nightmares, insomnia, anger outbursts, emotional liability, and numbness. So in addition to that, 40% of those people were able to decrease medications. So there's a lot of potential for the mental health support and emotional well-being.
Hi. When considering how a dog might benefit speech and language therapy, I did some research on the internet to see what other therapists have used their therapy dogs for. And I learned that a service dog can boost attendance at school. It can improve emotional understanding. They start to, students start to identify how the dog is feeling and relating to them in that way. It teaches empathy. It nurtures social skills, boosts academic progress, and builds resilience. So certain SLPs that have utilized dogs in the therapy setting have shared that it's a great motivator. Students want a dog to be present in their therapy, so using it to reward the students and also to be a part of the activity. It does increase engagement. It encourages them to participate in exercises that might be really challenging when teaching students how to use their mouth in different ways to correct their articulation. It can be tricky if they don't get it right away, and it can be frustrating. So having a dog there to help calm them and be a supportive listener has shown to be really beneficial for students. Dogs can also help break the cycle of negative social interactions certain students have when using social language or when they're working on their expressive language skills. A dog is going to be an eager listener, and they won't be there to judge. So building rapport and bridging conversation barriers. So when a dog is present, there's automatically a topic that two people have in common, you know? So it takes the pressure off of a communication partner to think of something unique to share. We can practice building utterance length. So it could be sit, or Polly sit, or Polly come here, girl. So building up the utterance length from one word to four words and beyond, targeting verbs. So working on different action words with my expressive language students. I loved some of the pictures that I found on the internet, using a Velcro vest on a dog and having pictures there. And I just see it being such an engaging and exciting activity for students. And I'm excited about the opportunity to use one in therapy.
Okay, at this time, we do have some students that have come here tonight. Please come up front, Ruby, Carter, Lily, and Emilio. They came up tonight to our board meeting to show a little interaction of how things would sort of work with Polly and how they actually feel about having a dog here in our building.
We got it. We got it. We will have one in every color for her.
So we don't know quite yet the timeline, right, of when this will start? Or do you have that information for us?
So Lisa and I were actually just talking about it in the hallway. We can get things started as fast as the handler wants to get trained, so like next week. And I would probably estimate that Polly could come to us after winter break, would be the goal. So take the month of December to do our weekly trainings, get things sort of set up, work with the team, talking about scheduling and thinking how we wanna slowly introduce her into the individual classrooms. Of course, a little episode of The Dish to introduce her and all that good stuff. But then just looking at how we wanna move forward once we return in January.
Does the board have any questions as well? Okay.
Can I ask a question? Could you tell us a little bit about Polly, like what kind of dog she is and her age?
That's part of what we're gonna start talking about, the rest of our... Some of the sessions with the dog might be the kind of club sessions that you're... Who may have some greater needs, who might benefit more from a therapy dog, and then also just looking at the general, having time at least once a week for a full block of time and totally dedicated to finding the dog with them. and totally dedicated to finding the dog with them. One of the things that we already, um, sort of talked about, actually, or, uh, I heard here today, we're talking about, is talking about that positive rewards system. So thinking about what are our number one things, of course, is being a problem child, and. Which I think really helps.
I mean, it's all for now.
So we've been working on coaching in that way. We have classrooms that can build that dynamic, that atmosphere of the kindness. They're going to have, walking in on a Friday wearing with a big paw, and with a window up their door, that was babies that pawed, and they will have. And that's, meaning, meaning to hold on for prizes or something else, but having students be able to work towards that. All these kind of tiny.
I have one question. I, I'm a dog person, I love dogs. Um, but, yeah, it looks to me like Polly is, um, hypoallergenic, and I just wanted to ask about that. And also, um, I could tell because of her hair. Um, what about those students who might be adverse to dogs? Or have, uh, you know, obviously their little guys sometimes have had negative interactions with dogs. How do you plan to kind of introduce her in a positive way?
I'll tell you from the allergy side, looked that up right away. Four total students, the entire building, that listed any type of allergy to dogs, and it was listed very general. Those working families will be contacted directly and explained more about Polly hygelenic, all of those kinds of things. In terms of being able to reduce any sort of fear or toxic experiences, that's one of the things that would start definitely within that first week of school. We're not, a lot of times here at DLS, because we all love to be together, we have huge, big blow-up assemblies, and the kids absolutely love it. Not appropriate for this type of introduction. What we would do is we would set up times with each individual classroom. Kids are already going to know, um, probably by the end of this week, beginning of next, that we're moving ahead with this. Like I said, the dish, we'll introduce all of this to them. So the kid will be able to see the dog, be able to see interactions with other children here in our building. So we're, that kind of visual will help, but there will be a lot of information they draw them up in December, so that when we come back in January, they'll have time in the individual room. If someone doesn't want to pet Polly or be by her, I mean, completely fine, students will have that choice, and we'll segue it in more and more as well. Very long tails, you're absolutely right. I like your. What?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Don't worry. She will be just fine. So most of our dogs, um, when they come to us as puppies, they are, can't handle the. They're put, uh, in, in a situation on their back, rub their tummies, fetch their claws. She didn't have the benefit of going through it as a puppy, but she still went through the.
So our plan is going to be, after talking to Mrs. Hale, we're going to put this on our October, excuse me, uh, December 12th board meeting and take formal action. But in the meantime, Dr. Berger, I know you've got some trainings, um, planned, so go, go forward with them, and then we can talk a little bit about how we want to introduce Polly to the DLS community, and then also district-wide.
I think we're very excited, so thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, for coming. Absolutely, and you know what? Um, can I ask the Chellis to please take a picture with their Diamond Awards? Mr. Hanson, would you mind doing that? Because we like to share that out with our community. Thank you so much for our audience for coming and supporting not only your, um, students, um, your moms that got, uh, recognized tonight, but then also welcoming Polly. I'm going to pass on some.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, we're going to have to have like, um, like an event for her.
Eric Rogers is going to move his office to DLS.
In the conference room, you know that, right? Like.
You'll be the alternate him.
Okay, is everyone good if we just continue on with the business agenda? Okay, perfect. Um, so that wraps up presentations. Moving on to the business agenda, where we have five, four items for action? This evening, the first item up for action is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, citizen wishes to have a separate vote on the item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Move. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Candel? Ms. Baylin? Yes. Ms. Recker? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Houghton? Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. The next item up for action this evening is our personnel item. Be it resolved that Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one leave of absence and one new hire. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Second. Ms. Recker? Ms. Baylin? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Houghton?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion is also approved. The next item up for action is approving the Omni Co-op Agreement. Eric, did you want to talk about this at all?
Co-op Agreement is just a, um, it's a part of this parking lot sideways sidewalk project. So we are part of the Omni Co-op. I just don't have a formal action of this taking place. It must have been many, many moons ago.
Okay.
It's been bought up by many different, uh, kind of co-op. So I just wanted to make sure we just had it kind of formalized, and then I would just register online.
Okay, perfect. Okay, be it resolved the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education approves the recommendation from the district to enter the master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Recker? Ms. Baylin? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Candel? Ms. Sullivan? Yes.
That motion is approved. Um, and then the last item up for action on our business agenda is, um, approving the West Oak Campus Parking Lot Sidewalk Replacement. Be it resolved the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education approves the recommendation from the district to award the contract for the parking lot and sidewalk replacement to Midwest Design Build Group, at a not-too-high cost of $551,452. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Move. Yes. Ms. Baylin? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Candel?
Okay, that motion is also approved, and that concludes our business agenda for the evening. Do we have any items for board discussion tonight?
No.
Okay. There being no items for discussion, we will move on to the Freedom of Information requests. Um, are these two separate requests? No, there's the request and the response.
Yes.
Okay. We had one, and that was fulfilled. Uh, moving on to notices and communications. Lots of highlights.
Yes. So I think we were recognized as, um, Marzano's Level One certification, which had a lot to do with how staff responded to our culture and climate, the supportive culture and climate, and how we expect the standards for, um, rigorous, um, instruction. We have our Diamond Edge Newsletter. All of you that were recognized on November 15th were School Board Appreciation Day. And then, um, a recognition for Dr. Berger, um, for the, um, veterans that came in and gave her a community service award. Um, that was a very nice surprise at the assembly. And then we have two episodes of the Diamond Dish, as you can see, and then also the West Oak Intermediate School Word episode, um, is what third through fifth graders are doing, so. Uh-huh. Yeah, isn't that funny? Yeah, that was, that was a good, that was a good kickoff. So yes, you can, for your viewing pleasure and enjoyment. So congratulations, Dr. Berger, for making it into the Herald, and all of your work with the veterans and community service, and leading that with Diamond Lake School and the district assembly. So we appreciate that. Welcome. And that is all the highlights for the past few weeks.
Fantastic. Um, that wraps up notices and communications. Uh, moving on to public comments and petition on non-agenda items. We have no public comments or petitions. Uh, moving on to others, does anyone have any others? The only thing I would say is I sent this as a text, but just to reiterate, at the delegate meeting, both of those resolutions did pass, um, and go forward. Um, and it was the usual intention, so. It was interesting, this time there was a floor nomination for the vice president, so there's drama.
Oh.
Like, people were like, what's going on? We've never seen this. It, it, like, it was, it was the kind of meeting that there could have been snacks, so. It was good. Fantastic, thank you for doing. Um, okay. There being no other others, then we'll have a motion to adjourn. Quick meeting.
Move. Alvin? Uh, yes? Alvin? Baylin? Yes? Recker?
Yes. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, that dog is amazing.
Thank you.
I have that dog in yellow. I said I have that.